The West Bridgewater School Committee Regular Open Meeting, today is September 14th, 2020. Could we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? Thank you. The listing of matters on the agenda are those recently anticipated by the Chair which may be discussed at the meeting. Not all items listed may in fact be discussed and other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by law. This meeting is being videotaped for cable. I'd like to start with a motion for the approval of the minutes from the August 24th, 2020 School Committee Meeting.
Moved.
Moved and second, moved and second, any discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Excellent. And now we'll turn this over to Mr. Bodwell for a discussion of our personnel.
All right, I'd like to welcome all of our new educators here today. It's great to see everyone. We've really enjoyed having them in the buildings these first nine days now. For the opening, I'm going to start with Mrs. Marble, our Director of Student Services. Then we're going to introduce different staff members of each of the buildings. So this is Marble, you're up.
Hi, I'm Kathleen Marble. I've been working for West Bridgewater for the past 18 years in one capacity or another in all the schools. Most recently, I received my certification, my CAGS, in Administrative Leadership. And I was approved by DESI, got my license shirt in August. I'm excited to be the new Director of Student Services and I look forward to working with you all.
Thank you, Mrs. Marble. Next up, Mrs. Goulet has been introduced some of our district-wide staff that all work at the elementary level.
Okay, first up, I'm going to introduce Sarah DeLuca, who is our new STEM teacher for grades K to six.
Hi, I'm Sarah DeLuca and I graduated from Liberty University last fall. And after doing my student teaching at the Howard Elementary School. And then that turned into a long-term subposition for the STEM. And then this, then I was accepted as the permanent position for STEM.
Next, we have Nicole Maloney, who is our district-wide adaptive phys ed teacher. She unfortunately couldn't be with us today. She has another job that she's working. And we have Elizabeth Roberts, who is our K-6 Elementary Phys Ed and Health teacher.
Okay. Hi, everybody, my name is Elizabeth Roberts. I more commonly go by Ellie. I'm really excited to be in this position with the K through six, uh, phys ed and health. I previously completed my student teaching in Somerset and I actually did a little bit abroad in Belize. So I have a little bit of experience in other countries as well as Massachusetts and I'm really happy to be back. So I'm super stoked for this year and it's going to be great. That's it.
Next is Elizabeth Dahin, who fortunately could not be with us again today. She is our newly hired Spring Street School Nurse. She graduated from Boston College and has worked in various schools nearby us. At the McDonald's School, we have Molly Page, who is our new grade two teacher.
Hi, everybody, my name is Molly Page. I'm going to be the new second grade teacher at Roseau McDonald. I just graduated from Bridgewater State. I was a double major in elementary education and mathematics. I soon taught in first grade with Emily Messina. So I'm so excited to be back at Roseau. I love the students and the staff and the school and it's a great district to work for. So I'm really excited to start my career here in West Bridgewater.
We also have Catherine Lawrence, who recently was married and her name is Catherine Stahl. I like to tell the story about her is that we hired her right before we left in March for the pandemic. And she unfortunately never got to work a day at Roseau McDonald as instructional assistant. So we're glad that she finally got to join us.
Just want to thank Mrs. Goulet because she is also with the Spring Street School and doing an. You guys think that's okay? But she's, we have taken over. Next is Mr. McGlothlin, going to talk about the new staff at the Howard School.
First, good evening, everyone. First, I would like to welcome our fifth grade Special Education Teacher, Ms. Jennifer Kelly.
Hi, my name's Jennifer Kelly. I'll be the fifth grade Special Education Teacher. I'm really excited to be part of the West Bridgewater Public Schools. This is my 17th year being in special education. I've worked in both private and public education as well. I'm really excited for a great year.
Next up, we have our Instructional Aid in sixth grade, Ms. Emily Quinn.
Hey, my name's Emily Quinn. I'll be the sixth grade IA at the Howard School. I recently completed my MED in General Special Education, grades K through 12. And I've spent the past two years teaching grades four, fifth and sixth at the Hampshire Country School in Ridge, New Hampshire. I am super excited to be back in West Bridgewater because this is where I graduated. So it's going to be a great year.
And last but not least, we have a woman who was hired to be an instructional aide in the fourth grade. But then we actually decided to offer her a position in August as our fully remote teacher for grades four, five and six for all of our fully remote students. Ms. Rachel Resendez.
Hi, everyone, my name is Rachel Resendez. As Tim said, I will be the fully remote teacher for grades fourth, fifth and sixth. I completed my undergraduate degree at Bridgewater State University with a dual major in elementary education and history. And I started my graduate degree at Merrimack College with dual degree in moderate disabilities and curriculum instruction. I got to complete my student teaching at the Howard School in fifth grade with brand enrichment. So I'm so excited to be back at the Howard this year and be a part of this community. So nice to meet you all.
Thank you, Ms. McGlothlin. Now we have Mrs. Page, the new principal of the middle senior high school.
Good evening. I'd just like to take the opportunity this evening to just introduce, I think some of you have already met Brandon Frost. But we're going to torture him once more to come on over and say hello. We're happy to have him here in West Bridgewater.
Hello, everyone. I've been here since July so far and it's been such a great time welcoming community. We've been working really hard to reopen the school safely for staff and students. Been great having the staff back and we're really looking forward to the students starting. So nice to meet everyone again.
We have a new library media specialist. Her name is Kelly Newell and I'd like to have her come on up and say hello.
Hi, everyone, I'm Kelly Newell. I came from Falmouth. I taught there for four years and then I was eight years in Marshfield as a library para. I did my undergrad at UMaine and got my graduate degree at Simmons University. So I'm really psyched to be here. Heard great things about this district. I've already seen it firsthand and I get to work in this beautiful space. I'm really, really lucky. So thank you.
And we have a new special ed teacher who took over for Kathy Marble, who went over to central office. His name is William Trial.
Hi, how you doing? My name's William Trial. I'm the new Special Education Teacher at the high school. This is my fourth year teaching now, my seventh year in the classroom. I am a 2014, 2019 graduate, Bridgewater State. Received my bachelor's and master's there. I'm working on my Certificate of Advanced Graduate Studies at Pittsburgh State in interdisciplinary studies. I'm really excited to be at West Bridgewater. Originally from Brockton, so it's kind of like being back home. And I'm looking forward to serving the families in this community. Thank you.
Okay, on behalf of all of the school committee members and all of your colleagues, welcome. We're really looking forward to sharing all of your time and talents. And I'm sure the kids are super excited as well. So thank you very much for coming in tonight. Mr. Bodwell, should we take a little break so they can all?
Go back to planning? Yes. Very appropriate, thank you. Thank you all for coming in.
So we are back. And Mr. Bodwell, for the superintendent's update.
Yes, thank you, Ms. Sullivan. I'd like to start with the opening week of school. And actually, it should be the opening weeks of school. An opening like none other with the preparation days that we've had. The teachers reported on Monday, August 31st. During that time, instead of doing, unfortunately, we couldn't have a space big enough to meet with everyone all at once. So we met with four different groups. So each of the schools met together, which was nice in a lot of ways. It's always nice to see everyone, but it was more personal, I think, to get to see and talk to everyone in each school building. I want to thank Mrs. Grinder because she provided a wonderful grab and go lunch after. So after we finished, they got their lunch for the rest of the afternoon and then the next group rotated in. As we've gone through the opening, I would definitely want to thank Mrs. Hamlin for all her hard work and her staff's hard work in getting the building prepared. Part of the preparation period was giving teachers and all the educators those 10 school days to get ready for opening. And Mrs. Giannis worked very hard with the building principals and the administration to create structured learning time for our staff. And it looked a little bit different at each of the schools. There was consistency in some of the programs. There were topics that we wanted to cover. We want to make sure they understood what we were doing, for example, with Google Classroom, Google Meets. And we know that sometimes there's a difference in proficiency level. So we want to make sure that everyone was on the same page when we ended. And then there was building-specific time that teachers could spend working together, working in their grade level meetings, department meetings and team meetings. We found that to be really, really important time. And also, we found it really important that they need to plan. It's a different way of learning. No matter what we're doing this year, we know that there'll be some type of remote learning part to the education of our students. And that's different for a lot of our staff. So we want to allow that planning time. Principals have done a wonderful job and administrators sending out information to the parents. We certainly don't want to overload them, but we want to provide them as much information as possible. So thank you very much to the building administrators. Information has been shared with parents about Google Classroom, Google Meets. I think we're work, still working with some of the teachers to kind of have a Q and A session. I think we had one today at the middle senior high school. And I think that's good because then people can ask questions. It's good to give that information out before, but it might also be very meaningful and appropriate to do it once we start the school year when more questions come up. Just an update on the bus routes. We finalized the bus routes with Lucini's this afternoon. The principals and the secretaries are doing a final check of the route. It's our goal to have them posted out at 9:00 AM tomorrow. So the parents and guardians can take a look at them and then we'll talk about any changes that need to be made. We're ready to start on Wednesday. It'll be Cohort A in person. Cohort B will be remote. And then Thursday and Friday Cohort B will be in. It's a unique week for us, starting on a Wednesday, probably the worst day we could have started because that's usually our fully remote day. So we want to keep pushing that out to parents that this Wednesday is different than the other Wednesdays. Next week when we start, it'll be Cohorts A and B, oh, excuse me, Cohort A on Monday and Tuesday in person. And Cohort B will be remote. Then Thursday, Friday Cohort B will be in person and Cohort A will be remote. Last Thursday, we had a number of school committee members who took a tour around the four different schools. I thought it was a great opportunity for them to see what the planning looked like, to see what the buildings looked like. And it was also a good opportunity for them to ask some questions of the educators that they came in contact with. So I'm not sure if anyone wanted to talk about their experiences.
If I'm honest, I thought I was going to be sad during the walkthroughs. I don't know why. In my head, I thought it was going to be bear grab classrooms, but that wasn't the case at all. If anything, I was inspired and impressed at the teachers and staff's creativity and resourcefulness and thinking outside the box to redefine spaces. And coming up with new procedures to minimize impact on the students. It was apparent that people are doing whatever is needed to make things work in a difficult situation. We even saw Ms. Elves at Roseau playing tech support, working on swapping out keys on old Chromebooks so they could be brought back into circulation. So a big thank you for me to all the teachers and staff who've been working so hard to ensure our kids come back to the building safely.
Thank you, both Donna and David. And you said it all. The thought that really hit me or just the impression that I felt, the feeling, was every teacher that was in their classroom or collaborating with their colleagues. Everyone was trying to make it inviting for the kids so they would want to come to school and stay in school. That was their goal. That's all I kept seeing and hearing and just all of the, you know, material things, inviting them. Everybody is, with their goals of trying to keep everyone safe, teachers and students allow, you know, both. It was, it was super impressive. I was really excited and I felt that excitement for the kids. So I'm excited for Wednesday and all the days after that, too. So thank you.
And again, I've just, our teachers do an outstanding job. They did an outstanding job in the spring when we had very little planning time. And I'm just continue to be impressed by their hard work and dedication to work with our kids every single day. They just, they jumped right into this during these 10 days and they made great use of the time. I know that we also have, I have a couple of pictures if you want to go to them. It's just of the, Mrs. Hume, you just said redefine spaces and there's very, two very redefined spaces at the elementary level in both of the cafeterias at the Howard School and the Roseau McDonald School. So if you look at these images, you'll see that Mr. Leo Mulvey and his company that he works for donated these devices that were used in trade shows. And these are going to be very helpful in the buildings to create, take a larger space and make it into a smaller space. We thank him very much for their generosity.
So let's see, I believe the next under superintendent's update would be the curriculum night?
Yes. Due to obviously the change in schedule, we had to move around our curriculum nights, our open house nights. We have moved them into October. The dates have been sent out, but I'll read them here and they're listed also. October 6th, Tuesday the 6th is for the middle senior high school. The 8th will be for the Howard School, the 13th for the Roseau McDonald and the 15th for the Spring Street School. Right now, we have a tentative start time of 6 o'clock. And during that time, the principals will be doing a presentation, providing some, an overview of information. And then they'll be asking each individual teacher to create a video that will replicate what they would do during a normal curriculum night, open house. Unfortunately, we just can't bringing all the parents in with an unknown number in classrooms and so forth. But we're going to do the next best thing. We're going to provide them with all the information in links that they can click on that night, hopefully. Or they'll stay up on our website or in a Google folder that they can access at any time. That'll be a good opportunity for them to make sure they get to talk to not only the, or see the classroom teachers, but also the specialists as well. A good reference point for them. Some more information will be sent out directly from the building principals as we get closer to each of those evenings.
And next up is the COVID-19 handbook supplement.
We discussed that at the last school committee meeting about creating some type of a supplemental handbook that would be beneficial for parents to use as a reference guide. The document started with some very general information, information that was taken both somewhat from our student parent handbook, but also our reopening plan. And the principals have done an outstanding job continuing to add information there. It will be public, hopefully tomorrow, we'll put it up on the website and we'll send it out. But there's information as such as a contact information for people in the building, information about our full, for our fully remote families in the Wildcat Virtual Learning Academy. Hybrid model information, class schedules for each grade level will be there for reference. Information about arrival and dismissal, movement around the building, passing time, masks and mask breaks, recess time and what that looks like. Bathroom usage, use or not use of lockers and water fountains, cleaning information as well as back to school form information. This year, we're going to be putting all those forms online. Information will be sent out to families. That's going to eliminate the handing of the passing of papers, which we think in this day and age is a, is a much better way to collect the information. So that will be sent out as well. There's also information in this handbook about surround care, food services, health and safety protocols, exclusion guidelines for families. So they'll know what to check for when a child is ready to come into school in COVID-related scenarios in case someone becomes sick, what the, what the protocols will be. Yeah, we feel it's a very comprehensive document. And again, it will be shared with all the parents most likely tomorrow. And our goal is to keep adding information as appropriate. So it's not just a static document, but if something comes up, we can continue to add to this. In this, you know, day and age of COVID-related stuff needing to be out there, this is that one place. So we know, like I said, lots of emails have been sent by myself and the building principals. Hopefully, this is kind of that clearinghouse for information.
Thank you for that, Mr. Bodwell. I would like to just say thank you also to the other principals and the rest of the administration. Mrs. Hume and I have spent some significant time with that as well. We're just super proud of all the information that you've been able to gather and just to transmit it just so succinctly. And so again, that is one of the kind of feelings around is that there's so much information, all these emails. And parents are just kind of overwhelmed, especially if they have more than one child in a school. So we hope that these, this COVID handbook will help with each school's procedures and then schedules as well. So thank you so much for that.
We appreciate your feedback because it's, we like to hear from the parents because we want their perspective. Because we've been working on this for seems like months now. So we kind of, we have our mindset of what's going on and how things are going. But when we get questions from parents, it's good for us to reflect on those questions and then be able to share out the relevant information that they need.
Again, thank you for all your hard work and your time. Next is food services.
Yes, I asked Mrs. Grinder to come in this evening. She has done a wonderful job with our food service program. I think it's always a treat when you get to eat lunch here. I never mind forgetting my lunch at home if I can have a great meal here. And that, that's the same for our kids. They do a wonderful job. We've, she did a wonderful job this spring during a very tough time for many different families, fed lots of families in need. I just wanted her to come in to talk about the food service program, what it's going to look like, what it's going to look like for our in-person students. But also what it's going to look like for the fully remote students, our hybrid students and also some information that recently came about to parents informed about.
Good evening, thank you, Mr. Bodwell. Well, we've had a lot of changes in, in every department within the school and certainly within the food services component. What I'd like to stress today that it's really very important for myself and my staff for you to know that we're here working very hard to make sure that every student will be offered quality nutritious meals at school. Whether they're in-house meals for hybrid students, whether they're remote meals being sent home to hybrid students or whether the student is completely remote. We're offering meal packages for every, I guess, scenario. It is required that for a school day that we provide lunch to students or at least offer lunch to students. But it's also very important to me to know that we're offering quality lunch to students. I believe that it's a big piece of learning that students are well-fed. That being said, the handbook supplement does include a lot of details about each of those models and how they will be implemented. There are differences within each of the four schools. But the basic tenet is that there'll be a menu for Cohort A for breakfast and Cohort B for breakfast, Cohort A for lunch and Cohort B for lunch. And when you go onto the district webpage and click on food services, you will see all the different menus for each of the schools for the different cohorts. Students that are in Cohort A and will be able to eat meals in school on Mondays and Tuesdays. And they will be offered meals to take home for their remote days of Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. Students in Cohort B will be able to eat meals in school on Thursday and Friday. And they will take home meals on Friday for the Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, when they won't be in school. For the fully remote students, on Wednesdays, we will be offering, similar to what we did in the spring, a curbside pickup of five-day meals, meal packages to all remote learners if they should wish. And there's information around ordering the remote meal packages again on the, in the COVID handbook supplement. The big news is that on August 31st, the USDA announced that they were extending flexibilities so that districts around the country could offer meals free to all students through December 31st of this year. This is really quite unprecedented and it was in response to the fact that there's a lot of issues still with COVID-19 and its effect on the economy. Currently, right now, we have one in four students in West Bridgewater that is already eligible for free reduced meals, which is about, you know, 337 students right now. And this is before applications have gone home for this school year. So those are students who have been direct certified for free meals. So what this waiver is doing is it'll, it's allowing for students who may not quite qualify for free meals to be able to get meals free of charge for at least the next few months as we recover from this pandemic. Which, you know, that being said, the funding is coming from the USDA. And what we'll need to do is we'll just need to claim reimbursable meals like we always have. It'll just be operated similar to the type of claiming we did in the spring when we served emergency meals between March and end of June of this year. So I don't know if anyone has any questions. It's a lot of information, I understand. So I guess the only other thing I would mention is that free and reduced applications will still go home to students the first day of school as they traditionally have. And it will be very important for families who think they may qualify for free or reduced-priced meals to still fill out an application. This will be very, be very critical when things do switch back to paid, reduced and free status. So there'll be a seamless transition for students. And also recognizing that the numbers that, of students that are free and reduced affects Title I funding and also grant funding. So it's really important that families still do fill out applications if they feel that. So it's really important that families still do fill out applications if they feel they may qualify.
Mr. Grinder, I want to thank you for continuing to be on top of this in terms of the rules and regulations and doing what's best, you know, for not only, you know, your operation, but also for the families of West Bridgewater. I think they benefit by all that you do for them, so thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Yes, thank you again, Mrs. Grinder. Very, very useful information. Under business, we have some homeschool applications. Mrs. Marvell?
We have 28 homeschool applications. I have reviewed them all, and they all align with the school district's policy. It would be my recommendation that the school committee approves them.
All right, thank you very much. I'd like to have a motion to approve the homeschool applications as presented by Mrs. Marvell.
Moved.
Second? Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you, Mrs. Marvell. And the next item under business, which is also a voting issue, is the donation of a shed from the Lions Club. Mrs. Hume?
Yeah, so the police department posted on social media at the end of August that the storage shed at the Roseell McDonald School that houses the learning toys for the, for the students to use at recess was vandalized over the summer. Nothing was stolen, but damage was caused to both the front of the shed and the roof from someone repeatedly jumping on it. So correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Marvell, but a few days later, Jerry Lawrence contacted you to let you know that the Lions Club would like to very generously donate a new wooden shed for Roseell School from Chapin Sheds out of Whitman, Mass. I believe the shed is scheduled to be delivered, fully assembled in November, and it will be placed to the right of the playground if you're standing in front of the playground looking at it. Mr. Marvell checked with Mrs. Goulet and Julie Hamlin, and they're both in favor of putting the new shed in that location. So I would like to send a huge thank you to Mr. Lawrence and the Lions Club for this donation. They have always been so supportive of and generous towards our schools, and we're very thankful. So I'd like to make a motion to accept the donation from the West Bridgewater Lions Club for the new storage shed for the Roseell McDonald School valued at $2,910.19.
Second? The motion has been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor? Could you just show the picture of the shed? That's a beauty. Thank you. Okay. And next up, also a voting issue under business is the Chromebook insurance. Mr. Marvell?
Thank you. In talking to Mr. Collins, we made the decision to look to move forward to the school committee. A $30 optional Chromebook insurance fee. This fee would be transferable to any device that a student uses during the school year. If we, we're not doing multi-years, we're just doing $30 each year. This would cover all accidental damage to the Chromebooks, and anything that would be covered under warranty would be covered no matter what. It's a, we feel it's a, it's a good option for parents. The cost to replace without the insurance, we will also list that in the Google form that parents would sign off, would be, would far exceed the $30 for a broken screen or a keyboard to stop working, things like that. And a full replacement, these are valued at around $250. So we feel it's a good option for parents. The principals will be sending out information to the parents when the Chromebooks are given out. And like I said, even if they have, they have a new one, or it might be a slightly used one, it's going to cover that one. And then if for whatever reason it's not working, maybe given a new Chromebook, because we do have certainly a number of them that are currently on order and will be here. We have, the first shipment should be here next week. It was shipped today, actually, which is a great news.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Marvell. Could I have a motion to approve the Chromebook insurance as presented?
Second?
Moved. Second. Any discussion? And all in favor? Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Marvell. And moving on to the inclusion matters update. Mrs. Smith?
Yes, hi. Inclusion Matters has been busy organizing different things that are helpful for parents. Actually, tonight, there's a webinar going on right now about how to use Google Classroom and debugging everything. So if you're on that, you're not here. But it, the best way to find all the different things that are going on in Inclusion Matters is on the Facebook page. If you're not on Facebook, my suggestion is to contact the special ed office, and we'll put you in touch with getting on the emails. But there's great information out there.
Excellent. Thank you very much, Mrs. Smith. And next is the warrant section, the warrant subcommittee report by myself. The following warrants were issued and paid for for fiscal year 2020 and 2021. Under bill warrants, there were three of them, dated September 3rd, 2020, in the amount of $30,487.24. A bill warrant dated September 10th of 2020, in the amount of $142,381.96. And the third bill warrant dated September 17th, 2020, in the amount of $44,796.37. There were two payroll warrants, first dated August 21st of 2020, in the amount of $424,469.17. And the second was dated September 4th of 2020, in the amount of $463,089.80. As always, all warrants are public record, and once signed, they are available in the selectmen's office for review. And now, under the public forum section, members of the audience wishing to address the committee may do so at this time. Audience members are reminded that personnel issues or issues that would violate student or employee confidentiality cannot be addressed during the public forum. And again, if anyone does address the committee during this public forum, I would ask for you to identify yourself with your name and your address as well, please. Okay, seeing no questions in the comment or the chat section, or any call-in folks? Excellent. Now, under the district-wide calendar, Mrs. Hume?
Yes, so for the middle, senior, high school, I think it was mentioned that curriculum night is going to be done, held virtually on October 6th from 6:00 to 7:00. And at the Spring Street School, the kindergarten meet and greet is going to be held on September 14th and 15th. And on the original agenda, it was noted that PTO meeting was going to be held on September 29th, but we did just find out today that that's postponed.
Excellent. All right, thank you. And the next regular school committee meeting is Monday, October 5th, 2020, at 6:30 p.m. here at the middle, senior, high school learning commons. We will be moving into executive session to just, to conduct and discuss strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, and not to reconvene an open session thereafter. Could I have a motion to convene, please?
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.